I will now call the September 4th, 2013 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you would stand, observe a moment of silence, and I will reach you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome those in attendance as well as those that might be watching on cable TV 7 to tonight's city council meeting. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, or there are items that need to be pulled. If not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cobell.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on annexation of the Blue Springs Christian Church.
Your honor, for this particular public hearing, which is ANNX-8-13-4070, I'd like to offer one exhibit which includes city council information form with attachments, petition of voluntary annexation agreement, site location map, vicinity map, affidavit of publication as advertised in examiner, August 24, 2013, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on this public hearing.
Thank you, and Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, your honor, and the members of the council. Again, before this evening is a request from Blue Springs Christian Church to annex their entire current church property in terms of location of their existing buildings, just under 20 acres of ground, and again includes the entire Blue Springs Christian Church facilities. This is the only property in this immediate vicinity that still remains within the county, and therefore they're looking to annex into the city in order to transfer from their private solid waste disposal system to the city sanitary sewer. In order to do that, they need to annex the property. They're also going through a process to rezone and plat the property as well. So you'll see those at the next city council meeting, following review by the planning commission next week. With that, again, staff has not received any comments to date in terms of those for or against the annexation of the subject property, but stand for any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Come in, be sworn in, please.
It's Matt Slish with Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. I come to you tonight on behalf of Blue Springs Christian Church. I think Mr. Allen gave you mostly the rundown of the facility. Basically, we're trying to take an existing lagoon system offline and hook up to the gravity sewer system and such. We've got ANX in and go through the plating process and now. So this is just kind of our first step in the process. So I'm available for any questions. There are members from Blue Springs Christian Church here as well to answer any questions, so.
Are there any questions from the council, comments?
I, yeah.
Councilman Fowler.
Yeah, it's good to have you actually applying and coming into the city. I know years ago when they built in the county, it was always kind of concerning that they didn't join, but it's great to see everybody want to join today.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of the annexation? In opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Next, we have another public hearing establishing the tax levy for 2013.
Your honor, I'd like to introduce one exhibit for this particular public hearing, which includes the city council information form from Assistant City Administrator Christine Cates proposing the tax levy for 2013 as 0.7489 per 100 assessed valuation with attachments, notice of 2013 aggregate assessed valuation from Jackson County, affidavit of publication as advertised in examiner, August 21, 2013, and bill number 4271 establishing tax levy for 2013, and these are all the exhibits I have to offer from the city.
Mrs. Cates, any comments on behalf of the city?
Sure. Thank you, your honor. The levy, property tax levy for 2013 in the ordinance for your consideration is being set at 74.89 cents for 2013, which is the same rate that we established for 2012 last year. 2013 is a reassessment year for the county, but the values within the city of Blue Springs showed little change or little growth. The total change in property values for the year is $3.5 million, which is about a half of a percent. Most of that is made up of new construction within the city, which is $2.7 million. And so when you take the difference between those two numbers, the values in the city for this year only grew $719,000, which is a tenth of one, a tenth of a percent. And so that's why, as we put the numbers through the formula and the calculation from the state auditor's office in compliance with the Hancock Amendment, that it sets the levy at the same for this year. So there's no change either up or down recommended.
Any questions or comments from Mrs. Cates? Anyone? Councilman Fowler?
Well, I have some comments. I have a presentation, either we can do it after staff or after the, after the public. I just want to be on the record.
Okay. Well, we're going to go to the, you want to do it before the public?
Either way, it's really up to you.
Okay. Let's go to the public and then come back. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to, we'll bring it back up here, Councilman Fowler.
Yes, your honor. I had a slide presentation I asked staff to put on there if they wouldn't mind running through some slides.
Is it Mr. Hertz going to handle that?
And some of these contain, or comments could be relative to the budget also. I know that that's up here tonight as well, but I wanted to speak to this. The first is, you know, I guess there was some concern over the past number of weeks about a service that Blue Springs was providing, ambulance service. That service has been transferred to CJC, and, you know, our taxes went up, but, you know, we really haven't gotten any new services. And that was concerning, so I wanted to talk about taxes for a minute and see if there was a way that we could find some middle ground here. Here's a sales tax comparison, Blue Springs Independence Lee Summit. When you look at the total services of police, streets, parks, fire, and ambulance service, Blue Springs has the highest sales tax of Independence and Lee Summit. Lee Summit and Independence both include fire and ambulance in their city, and as Blue Springs to compare to them, an equal comparison is to add our CJC in there, and that's, that's what our citizens pay if they're not in a special taxing district. Next slide. You can see that that's the north part of Blue Springs, the kind of the orange area there is the Coronado area. That 8.975 that you pay at that location, that's higher than any place in Independence or Lee Summit. You know, you have to go a long way to find a higher tax rate than that right there. And you, just a couple of years ago, it was quite, it was two cents less than that. So tax, sales taxes are going up in the city. Next slide. This is just the, this is from Lee Summit, that's their outstanding debt. It's page 79 of their comprehensive annual financial report. It's available from their website. I'm going to be talking to that, so I wanted to show it to you. Next slide. Basically, on the left is Blue Springs debt over the past 10 years versus Lee Summit debt for the past 10 years. Back in 2005, we were at $21 million in Blue Springs, and now that's gone up to $124 million, over a five times increase. While Lee Summit, they were at five times more than Blue Springs at $100 million back in 2005, they've actually decreased their debt by $27 million. The per capita, that's on the right-hand side, has continued to go up in Blue Springs, continued to go down in Lee Summit for, and we're, like I say, we're in the same economy, basically. Our debt is certainly on the rise, and it concerns me that taxes are going up and so is debt. Next slide. This is the per capita debt, the same data that we just saw, just shown in visual form. The blue is Blue Springs and the red is Lee Summit. We used to be, in 2005, about one-third of, per capita debt, per person debt in Blue Springs, and now we're almost three times as high as Lee Summit. Definitely going in two different directions. Next slide. This is just a copy out of the budget. It shows the bottom year down there is 2040. Blue Springs has got debt on the, on the books until the year 2040, 20, 26 years from now. Next slide. Last year's budget debt service was 10.2 million. This year's proposed budget, 10.2 million. That's $20 million in two years, and our debt isn't going down, it's actually going to be going up. The annual street overlay program only gets 2.5 million years, 2.5 million a year. 20 million in debt service would find eight years of the street overlay. 10 million annually, I predict, is going to have some consequences if we continue this pace. I suggest why not pay down the debt, use the savings and interest to fix some roads. Next slide. Here is property tax levy rates. This is from the Jackson County website. It's got Blue Springs, Independence, and Lee Summit there. But again, Independence and Lee Summit don't have, don't, or they provide fire and ambulance service, so a fair comparison is the city plus our, our fire districts, and we actually, there are the highest property tax levy rates at a buck 83 now, and with a 15 cents more for EMS, that's going to go to a buck 97 for $100 of assessed valuation. That's more than Lee Summit or Independence. So again, with, with equal services, police, streets, parks, fire, and ambulance, Blue Springs residents pay higher taxes on property and sales tax. Next slide. So, yeah, by one, sales tax and property taxes are higher than Independence and Lee Summit. We need to do something about that. Our debt is escalating and going higher. We shouldn't continue to climb in our debt without, without an action plan. If a teenager had a credit card accumulating debt and not living within their means, shouldn't something be done? And I say, Blue Springs, stop, we stopped providing ambulance service, kept the taxes, asking for an additional tax increase in November. This is a cycle of increased spending, debt, and taxes in Blue Springs. And I think it needs to be addressed and should be accountable to the citizens. It's their money, and we need to, to show the direction it's going, and I'm not comfortable with the direction it's going. Next slide. Tell you what, we don't have to worry about that. I was going to talk about investments that are made without raising tax dollars. That's a lot of my history, and I've seen a lot of things grow in this town over time without raising taxes. So there is, there is obviously a budget surplus, or there's extra money out there that hasn't been allocated, okay, in today's budget, because the EMS service is no longer provided by the city, and there's going to be savings as, as our contract to them goes I contend that money should be used to help pay down the debt, or I'll even propose, you know, that we proportionally reduce our property taxes as CJC increases theirs. Therefore, it would be a budget neutral issue. So those are the kind of my comments. I know we've had some of these discussions before. I wanted to put it on public record one more time, that I'll be asking for a reduction versus the 74.89 cents, .7489 cents. So.
Can we go back to the map where it showed the sales tax rates? Now, you're showing that 8.975 percent is what you pay over on Adams Dairy Landing that includes the CID, right? Does that?
That is, that is just the TDD.
The TDD.
It includes the TDD.
And not the CID.
The CID in Adams Dairy Landing is a special assessment on the property, and it's not a sales tax.
Well, there is a CID sales tax, but it's not been approved yet.
That's correct.
Okay.
The reason I want to go back to that 8.97 percent. I shop at Costco occasionally, which is in Independence.
Right.
Interestingly, I looked at my receipt last week when I, when I got to the car, and I said, let me take a look and see how much sales tax I'm paying. It was 14 percent.
That's not on their website.
It might not be on their website, but if you shop at Costco, take a look at your receipt the next time. You had two different taxes that added up to right around 14 percent.
Interesting.
Yeah. So it depends on where you shop.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Can I ask a question, your honor? How much of that debt that you refer to was voter approved?
The last I had checked, I asked staff about a year ago, and they shared with me that about $1 in $3 was approved by the voters. Two out of three has not been. Is that, I don't know if there's an update to that since last year. But basically, the Adams Dairy Landing was approved by the council, not by the voters. NID, same thing there. So, but now the, the new debt coming on that we talk about for this building here and building a new police area, that is voter approved debt, so.
Any other comments, questions? Councilman Levy.
I just wanted to mention for public record as well, as you guys know, for the work session last week, I had suggested a proposal for a rollback of the tax levy as well, based on the comments that night for the work session and the conversations I've had with my colleagues since then. I'm not planning on making that motion tonight, but I wanted to thank my colleagues for discussing that with me and for keeping an open mind, as you said you would, and thank you for that time.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce the tax levy?
I'll introduce it.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4270, an ordinance establishing the tax levy for 2013.
Moving to be approved on first reading, proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, your honor. Again, I'd like to propose that we have a tax reduction for our citizens. I know that that was discussed last time, but I still think it's warranted, and so I make a motion that we reduce ours in proportion to the CJC increase.
Okay, you heard the motion. Is there a second?
Your honor?
Yes.
Just for public record, I think I'll second that, so we can come to a vote, so we can actually get a vote for the public.
Okay.
I think that would be fair.
All right. So we have a motion, a second. Further discussion?
Yes, your honor.
Yes.
You know, I guess my philosophy is by looking at the free enterprise system, government over time should become more efficient. What we've seen in this, the way it's all played out, is that basically a service was, was transferred, so there wasn't a new service, but there was a tax increase. And that's, that's exactly the opposite of being more efficient with tax dollars and getting more out of them for our citizens. That's actually expanding government and, and revenues without an increase in services. And so that's one of the reasons I feel so passionate about this issue, that we should work to help reduce taxes or, or pay down debt.
Councilman Carter?
Your honor, I would go back to the beginning on this, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but I guess I'm going to have to here. I go back to the beginning of this issue. We were confronted with rising costs of the subsidy that we paid to CJC, and we had at least one offer I know of, of ambulance service that would have come to the city without a subsidy. So we were at a crossroads. And I can only speak for myself, but in my view, getting out of the ambulance business was in the city's best interest. We were in the ambulance business to the extent that we held the contract, but we didn't have the ambulances. CJC did, and since 1992, yeah, since 1992, CJC has been, in fact, the ambulance provider for the city of Blue Springs. All we did was transfer the contract to them. Now, the citizens of Blue Springs decided they wanted to keep CJC. That's what that election was all about. You can see, tonight, we're going to have an amendment to the budget. Costs continue to go up, and that was factored into at least my decision when I went that way. I knew that things were going to go up, that costs were going to go up, insurance was going to go up, the cost of pavement was going to go up, prices continue to go up. So what we've managed to do is move the license over, and now we're able to redistribute that revenue. Now, I've talked to many people in the city who were here in 1974 when the original sales tax, not a property tax, but a sales tax, was passed on this issue, and they understand what it is we're trying to do. And I think in year one, what we talked about was less than $3, $2 and...
Eighty-four cents.
$2.84. And I have asked people in District 1, if you had a choice between things like maintaining the landscaping that we're putting in on Woodschapel Road and also on South 7 Highway, or, you know, returning our matching and our deferred comp, our employee longevity plan, which we're going to talk about tonight, would you rather the city invest that money or would you rather have $2.56? And everyone, to a person, said reinvest the money in the city. So speaking again for myself, that's the way I'm going to go. And I will make this offer to the citizens of District 1. I do it citywide, but Councilman Fowler would take me up on it. The first 10 people who call me tomorrow, who really need the $2.56, I'll pay it out of my pocket. I mean, I wouldn't even buy a gallon of gas at this point. So, I mean, I know that the popular thing to do is to say, you know, we rolled back this money, we rolled back taxes. That's politically popular. But the right thing to do, the responsible thing to do, is to take the money that we're saving and pay these things. I mean, the other option was to take an ambulance provider that none of us wanted, who would have taken the ambulance service with no subsidy. I wasn't for that. The citizens of Blue Springs weren't for that, so I would reject this motion. Thank you.
Well, I do want to clarify one thing for the record. Relative to the $2, and I thought it was 85 cents, that, that number, if we, we were talking about $150,000 house, and that would be, that wouldn't, what I'm proposing is actually $42 a year. So are you willing to give the next 10 people to call $42 a year?
Let's cut it to five. I have a hard budget.
So, I mean...
The 42 dollars, that's...
Okay. If you take $150,000 times the residential rate of .019, you end up with a $28,500 number, and it's per $100,000 of assessed evaluation, and if you do the math on that, it ends up being $42.75. That's the formula that they use. It's because I think you were after a 1 cent instead of 15 cent, maybe.
Yeah, and I was.
Yeah.
Because I was using Councilman Levy's original proposal. I remember.
Okay.
But we cannot, in our, if we refunded the same amount that we receive, that CJC is going to receive, sorry. If we refunded the same amount equivalent to CJC, we would be depleting our budget because their, their levy is more than what we, as a city, have been subsidizing. So if you're proposing to give back the same amount that CJC is going to receive on their levy, that means you're taking a big chunk out of the budget, not just the $750,000 that is allocated in the budget to subsidize that.
May I address that?
Absolutely.
Yes, I believe our finance director pointed out that that, that was, the 15 cents is equivalent to about $1.1 million a year, okay? And through the years, for four consecutive years, we averaged, the city averaged a subsidy of $1.1 million a year. That was through '04 to '07, okay, for four consecutive years. And when we did that, City Hall didn't fall down, we maintained it, but, but since that time, since those four years, the city has actually got a whole lot more money for public safety. We're getting almost $3 million more a year with a half-cent public safety sales tax. And so I contend it'd be very easy to do it today if we, if we did it back then and got by in tougher economic, in, I guess, reduced budget economic times. So it's, it's a less...
Are you mixing the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Are you mixing the public safety sales tax with these numbers?
No, no. Here, if you want to put this up there, this is...
Well, that's what you said, safety tax.
Okay, I'm saying that when we, our subsidy through '04 to '07 was $1.1 million.
But that was '07.
And that was, that was before the city was getting extra revenue for public safety, okay? If we made it back then, it just seems like it'd be easier to follow that we could make it today because we're getting an extra $3 million a year for public safety.
But that's not the same thing. You're, you're blending apples and oranges, and you can't do that. It's, it's the same issue with a sales tax against property levy. I, you're saying... They're two different animals.
You're saying...
And you cannot, you have to, from my perspective, if you're going to look at reducing a levy, you have to look at what is in the budget this year and has for last year, based on the $750,000. You can't refund, you can't reduce your levy for greater than that because now you're digging into the regular budget.
Your honor, I think that's a philosophical difference. My colleague says that since spending is justified up here, justified to her, that you can't cut the budget. Well, I say that budgets are billed off of revenues. If the revenue is cut, then the budget has to go proportional to the revenues. You make the discussion of revenues first, and then you build a budget to what the taxpayers are providing you.
Well, I don't know what you propose to cut. I mean, I'm all for a tax cut.
Well, let me interject something. I don't think we're going to side this philosophical difference here this evening. So are there any other comments before we take...
Yes, your honor.
Councilman Cobell.
Take me a second here, maybe, to frame what I want to say, but I, I think one of the, one of the fundamental things about, there's a couple of points I want to make. One of the fundamental things about a general tax, be it property or sales tax, is that our citizens elect a city council to allocate that money to the priorities of the city. Not specific priorities, but general priorities. I think one of the most important things to note about Councilman Fowler's comment about those four years where we had $1.1 million is, one of the things that our citizens call the city council to do is to be responsible in the allocation of that money. We saw that was growing without bound, and if I remember correctly, the years where that ended, it went down by about 50 percent because we made decisions to manage that process differently and ended up cutting that subsidy roughly in half. Again, that's because this council, maybe with prior different members, acted responsibly to manage the budget. That's what happened this year. We made a responsible decision to manage the process of providing ambulance service to our citizens and have brought that money down again. I think the com, the problem I have with the comment about the public safety tax, and why you're talking about apples and oranges, is because the public safety tax is a dedicated tax. It had, it was, it was approved by the voters for specific things, ambulance service not being one of them. So suggesting that somehow reducing the amount of money that we pay for ambulance service that we can then make it up over on the public safety tax side of things simply doesn't work because it's a dedicated tax. We have a citizens group that monitors that to make sure that it is spent appropriately, and to have spent that on something like ambulance service, if I understood the comment, would be inappropriate because that was not part of that dedicated tax. And it really, for me, outlines the difference in this discussion over the last month or so, is that we've had a very extensive public debate about an alleged dedicated tax that wasn't dedicated, and now we're talking about a dedicated tax and spending it on a non-dedicated thing. Neither one of those things makes sense, and both, I think, are inconsistent with the purpose of the taxes involved. So those are my comments to that.
Your honor? Yeah.
Relative to the dedicated tax, it was for public safety, and there are dedicated things in there like communications equipment, things like that. But 20, 30 years down the road, you know, that money is still going to be used for public safety and different needs other than communication equipment or, or a public safety facility. There's all kinds of things that fall under the umbrella of public safety, and I think ambulance service is one of them. If, if your argument was true about, hey, we've got an extra $3 million for public safety, certainly doesn't look like the public safety budget to me grew by $3 million, okay? I'm, I'm not watching the police budget actually grow in proportion to the new income that we're seeing. I contend that there's already been funds that used to go to public safety, you know, they're not part of the dedicated tax, that have gone elsewhere. So that's my concern relative to that.
Your honor? Councilman Carter? I call the question. Okay. Well, we'll go to a vote then. On the amendment. This is the amendment that Councilman Fowler offered. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. All same sign. Aye. Okay. Your motion fails. Now we're back to the original question. The original, you're on first reading. On first reading. Any further discussion on that?
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Second reading.
Second reading of Bill Number 4270, an ordinance establishing the tax levy for 2013.
Move the bill be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second? Second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Leddy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Debison.
Aye.
Councilman Kowbell.
Aye.
Carrie unanimously giving it ordinance number 4449.
Next, we have a public hearing on the 2013-2014 budget. Mr. Johnson.
Your Honor, I'd like to offer two exhibits for this particular public hearing. And the packet includes an additional exhibit, which I'll speak to here in just a second. The first exhibit includes a city council information form from Finance Director Christine Cates with attachments, budget in brief, and affidavit of publication as advertising the Blue Springs Examiner on August 14, 2013. And in response to discussion that was held at the budget work session on August the 22nd, I provided the mayor and council with a staff memo, which was distributed on September 3, 2013. I'd like to identify that as exhibit number two. And that memorandum specifically addresses issues related to compensation and benefits, specifically a retirement benefit and what is being referred to as a longevity plan. And thirdly, in that memorandum, address landscaping issues and proposals that were discussed during the August work session. Should the council take, undertake consideration of those items that are included in the memorandum, I've indicated that that would require consideration of budget amendment. But the public hearing at this point in time and the budget proposal at you at this particular time is the one that was submitted to you on August the 1st. And staff is prepared to answer any questions or provide any additional information that you seek. And these are all the exhibits I had to offer on behalf of the public hearing.
Are there further comments on behalf of the city? Mr. Johnson, you'd like to make?
One further comment is to thank all the men and women that I see here of our wonderful workforce who have attended tonight. I assume you're here to track the discussion on these important items, and I want to thank you for your service and dedication to our community, and also see members of the EDC and the members of our Citizens Advisory Board. So, thank you for following this closely and paying attention to important work that the council's doing tonight.
I'm sure we all echo those same sentiments. Mr. Johnson? Any questions of Mr. Johnson from council? Seeing none, let's take it to the public. Does anyone in the audience like to speak in support of, in support of the budget? In support of the budget? In opposition to the budget? In opposition to? We'll close this public hearing. Next, we have the adoption of the budget. We'd like to introduce it.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4271, an ordinance appropriating from the revenue of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri expenditures in accordance with the 2013-2014 annual budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Is there a motion?
Move the bill be approved on first reading and proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, which would also be time for amendments.
Your Honor, if I may, there was some discussion at the work session, and this relates to the Downtown Alive group and the request for funding for $10,000 a year, renewable for three years. I had kind of floated that out there with everybody, just so they could get a chance to think about it. I would like to go ahead and propose we do that at this time. If you remember, the city signed into an agreement with Downtown Alive, and we agreed to fund some money to that organization to get it started with. We signed, Eric Johnson actually signed that agreement with Downtown Alive and Missouri Main Street, in that it did call out that part of the procedures of doing this was to, a logical step of procedures, trying to realize, revitalize downtown and improve downtown and change the way Blue Springs is put together downtown, try to bring it back. And one of the steps that is called for at this point is to hire, look for and hire a full-time staff person to manage the activities that go on downtown and try to promote it further and build it further on what they've already come out and done. And that group has done some wonderful things. We've got some business interest downtown. As you can see with the parking problem downtown, has come off really great. We've got some interest with some other people that are looking at coming in downtown because they feel that there's an area there that they can make a profit. So, it's nice to see that that's starting to turn around. But that group does need some help in continuing this process and continuing on down that road. And what they have asked for is a $10,000 contribution, and they would come back, it's renewable for three years, they would come back and make a presentation to us to show where they're at, how they've used that money, where they're going with it, what accomplishments they had. And then, it would be up for the council, again, to approve it again on the next budget session. It's not like an automatic, it's not what I'm proposing, an automatic, but it would be one that would, renewable, we'd have to look at each year for the next three years. Hopefully, by that time, they should be in a position where that position can be fully funded by that organization and hopefully the downtown has showed its flourish of business and activity and where it should be at that point. So, I would like to make that amendment, and I'm sure Mr. Johnson would like to know where I'm coming up with that money. Since I look at this as being an economic development tool targeted specifically to downtown, I would like to carve off out of our economic development money that we support economic EDC, $10,000 to go towards this.
Would you rather let staff figure out how to come up with that $10,000?
If staff would like to do that, I would...
Yeah, rather than...
I would be more than happy to go behind that. But I'm sure Mr. Johnson would be like to know at least what I was thinking, and that was my thoughts, as opposed to maybe going to unallocated, unfunded, whatever. You know, I don't necessarily want to go to that well all the time, and since I felt that this was something that directly tied into economic development, that was where I would go with it. But I have no problem letting staff make that decision.
Okay, so, but the motion is, is to allocate or contribute or appropriate $10,000 to the downtown?
Downtown, and that would be for hiring a staff to manage Downtown Alive. It wouldn't be, and staff can work on this, too, to make sure we come up with a good agreement. But I don't necessarily want that money going to pay for a street fair. That's not what it's for. It's for, it's for the managed target goal of hiring a staff person to manage that.
I'm sure staff can come up with the necessary language to put those restrictions on how it would be spent.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
For Christine, there's, currently in the budget is $5,000 that's allocated for Downtown Alive.
Yeah, that's part of the CDBG program.
And so, is this your proposal that the $10,000 is on top of that?
On top of that, yes, sir.
So, that the total allocation for Downtown Alive would be $15,000?
Correct.
And is the $10,000 you're proposing, I may have missed it if you said it, are they required to match that? So, they're raising private funds?
What they're raising is private funds through other organizations within the community that have already contributed, plus also some of their benefactors. Their target goal is to reach $30,000, which is what they feel would be adequate to fund a staff person. So, that's their goal. This would be approximately one-third of that. They're going to have to come up with another two-thirds of it. And that's why my specification, as far as this needs to go towards funding of a staff person, if they can't raise the rest of the money, I don't see why the city should be putting money in, you know, in that, if you follow what I'm trying to say.
Certainly, and...
And I'm not trying to be mean with them, but what I'm trying to say is, this is for that. If they can't come forward and get the rest of the money, we don't have to pony up our money.
I think I'm tracking, and certainly that gives us, I think, some time. If the council passes this amendment, that gives staff some time to further evaluate the budget and where we might be able to come up with some flexibility and spending plan. And it puts the ownership back on them to come up with the other two-thirds of the funding. And so, I think we have some time to work those details out.
Right, there's some accountability involved in that. Also, why I'm at this point, and I guess I'll ask the question because I'm not sure, the amendments to the budget that we received from staff, is this something that we want to do item by item, or can we just kind of roll this together and do it all as one deal? Or what is staff looking for as direction on that?
That's the city attorney.
Well, if you do them individually, everybody will get to vote however they want on each one. If you do them all together, then if there are several people that are opposed to one or two of them, we might end up, none of them passing. So, I don't know what the status is, but you need to take that into account.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, you recommend and go to individual?
We'll go individual.
Then I would submit that as this one of those items in conjunction with the items that you have proposed already.
Okay. You've heard his motion on the downtown allocation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We don't need a roll call. This one, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Aye.
Okay, five and one, it passes. Now, would anyone like to make amendments on item one of the memorandum that Mr. Johnson sent out that on the 401A city matched to the 4573?
Your Honor, I'll make that amendment, or make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries. Item two, employee longevity plan.
Again, Your Honor, I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. To me, longevity, I see the incentive as retirement. In today's society, more and more businesses are stopped contributing to retirement or freezing them, okay? That's down almost 50% of the companies over the past 10 years, according to Forbes Magazine. And I'm not in any way suggesting that we do that with our employees, okay? Matter of fact, that's why I voted for the first one, okay? The deferred compensation, we should increase that. That's where society is, and the free enterprise system is moving to, is more individual and accountable retirement plans. I think our city has got a good retirement plan now, and I support that. But because it uses the multipliers of years of service and the high last-year's-of-year salary, that is an incentive to continue with the staff and with Blue Springs. The odds are, if you go into free enterprise, that benefit won't be there. And many people in free enterprise are losing that benefit today. So, I think that is a healthy longevity plan. I really can't subscribe to, just because, you know, the calendar ticks off that people get raises. I think it's, the free enterprise system has taught me that it's, you know, pay-for-performance is actually a better way of compensating folks. Good performers get larger raises. People that don't perform as high don't get those larger raises. So, and this is, what this does is, it's 2.5% every five years of service, and if you do the math over a career and you multiply that times the number of employees we have and start compounding that years over years, that turns into a lot of money. So, I can't support this longevity clause.
Councilman Leddy.
Thank you, Your Honor. This was a plan developed by Mr. Johnson, but something I had submitted for discussion at the work session last week. I think this is an important step for us to begin to be competitive with our surrounding communities. We've had a lot of discussion with employees, and I've had a lot of discussion with Mr. Johnson on the need for something like this, the need to not only reward, you know, good performance, which I agree is the goal, but also to essentially reward loyalty. We are below, in my opinion, we are below some of the levels of the surrounding communities, both in our pay and in our retirement, which is something you mentioned that is also a great benefit. We had some discussion about raising our loggers level last week as well, but that is just a target we can't reach, given the budget constraints we currently have. So, I think this is something we need to do. I think you will find this will be something supported by the employees, obviously, but something that they need to show that we are investing in there, investing in the future of this city, and not just allowing ourselves to continue to be below par with our surrounding municipality. So, something I support, something I would encourage my colleagues to support.
Any other comments?
Your Honor, I would also want to incentivize our employees, because one thing that we haven't talked about, Councilman Fowler talks about the private sector, I think a lot of these people could make a lot more money in the private sector. And keeping them in public service is to our benefit long-term, and anything we can do to keep them, I would support.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Aye.
Five, one, carries. Next, we have the landscape.
Your Honor, I'll go ahead and make this motion.
Okay. Second. Discussion?
May I?
Yes.
And the reason I made this motion is, is after years and years and years and years of neglect on Woodchapel, it's happy to see that we've got the improvements over there, and we're getting the landscape over there, and our westernmost entrance into Blue Springs is now coming up to par with some of the rest of the entrances we have. So, therefore, I wholeheartedly make a motion for this and encourage everybody to vote for it.
We already had a whole heart and a second, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries.
Now, you're back to first reading as amended.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I have another amendment, too.
Okay.
Part of the, one other proposal I had suggested last week for discussion, I wanted to continue that and make a motion here tonight, was something I suggested, a reduction in our general fund emergency reserve policy. Currently, it's set at 30%. That was raised from 20% back in 2011. By this step, in the motion I'm going to make, if we roll back our general fund reserve policy back to 25, which is still well above the suggested percentage, and still gives us plenty of reasonable opportunity to alleviate any issues we might have, my suggestion would be to raise that from our emergency reserve fund from 20% back to 17%, and our budget stabilization, which is currently at 10, back to 2, but I would be open to staff suggestions on how that would best be done. But essentially, a rollback of 5% from our emergency reserve policy would free up 1.1 million in the budget. And my motion, and what to do with that money, is going to be to put that towards the continued repair of our sidewalks. Many of you were on the council, I don't know if all of you were, when we made the policy to shave off $200,000 from our street overlay program, from the 2.5 million that we were currently spending, in order to start addressing some of the sidewalk defects that were occurring in the city. At that time, the city took on the policy and changed it from being the homeowner's responsibility to now being our responsibility as a city. The problem with that, and something we didn't foresee at the time, was around the same time we made that switch, there was also some increase in the regulations from the federal level on compliance that sidewalks had to meet. They had changed the regulation. So, what is currently being done with that $200,000 is, as we are continuing on the street overlay program and making those changes to the streets, any adjacent sidewalk has to then meet compliance with the current regulations, just as we do with our codes. If you make a certain percentage of change, you have to bring the property up to code. So, that $200,000, which initially was forecast by Oliver DeGroot, and said it would cost around, it would take around 12 years to address all of the existing defects, that money, while is making some impact, is not having any of the impact that we had intended at the time. That $200,000 is being limited in its scope because it's simply being done to keep us compliant with federal regulation. So, what I'm hoping to do with this money is inject at one time, 1.1 million into our sidewalk infrastructure. The numbers that I got from Mr. Sandy indicate that we have 157 linear miles of sidewalks in Blue Springs. He estimated, based on various stages of investment, that we could, we could impact about 31 miles of that in one year. So, about 20% of all the sidewalks in the city we could address. That wouldn't necessarily indicate the amount of defects we could address, because that's a number that he would not really have until we actually start the program. But we could, at the very least, impact 20% of our sidewalks with this one-time injection in funds. It does not hurt the city from a financial standpoint and our emergency reserves, and we still have plenty to keep ourselves in check if there's any budget issues. And so, I would make a motion that we permanently change our general fund emergency policy to 25% and use that 1.1 million for a one-time contribution to sidewalks.
Mr. Johnson.
Councilman, you just said permanently.
Sure.
So, it's, originally, I thought the intent was to do a one-year change in order to get the one-time revenue, but your proposal is actually to reduce the amounts ongoing?
Well...
Just so I can clarify and understand what you're...
Within, I kind of would question this to staff then. If we can roll it back up to 30% next year, that would be fine, but my understanding was it had to be a permanent policy change in order to roll it back to 25% at least for this year. And then, we would have to have an additional policy change next year to roll it back to 30. Is that incorrect?
I'm allowed to respond.
No, we could make a one-time drawdown and leave the policy in place and just use this amendment as the driver that we intend to build it back up to that 30%.
It might take us several years to get back to the goal of where we are now, but we would feel more comfortable maintaining the percentages as the policy goal and maintaining
goal and maintaining that as the council's policy and our goal.
Absolutely, yeah. I supported that in 2011. I think 30% puts us in a comfortable conservative position if we have issues. So I would amend my motion then to say to roll it back up to 30 at which point staff can work it out.
Well, you haven't had a second yet, so you can change the motion.
Sure. I would adjust there.
Well, I'd be happy to second it, your honor.
Is this a District Two thing?
You could probably say that, yeah. Kind of like a tag team.
Any discussion? So we have a motion and a second to do what he said. I'm not going to try to repeat it.
And your honor, I just need one, sorry, one more time here. Just give me the percentages again on what you're, on the rollback.
Well, my suggestion would be to roll back 5% as far as whether it comes out of the emergency reserve fund or the budget stabilization. That would be something I would be welcome for input from staff, which that would better be allocated. My suggestion was 17% for emergency reserve and 8% for budget stabilization to make up that 25. But again, if that, if, it would be better to leave it all in budget stabilization and pull it out in five from the emergency reserve, I'm fine with that as well.
May I inquire?
Yes, yes.
Christine, do you have any, you want to respond to that at this point in time or do you want to defer and, and get back?
I've just calculated the numbers and the way they lay out and that, that calculation is appropriate for the way we have our reserve set up.
Okay. So I would maintain that.
Okay, so we have the motion. Is there, and you seconded it already. Okay. Is there a further discussion?
Will there be?
Your honor?
Go ahead, Councilman Fowler.
Yeah, it's going to be tough for me to raid the reserves with these debt levels, so.
Is there going to be a further discussion at some point in time about how it's implemented? Is it?
Yeah, the, the other question is, and I don't know if we need to do it tonight, but it's some future time, we need to determine our own implementation.
Sure.
And maybe that's something that we'll have to have some discussion with staff.
A work session perhaps.
We could maybe direct Mr. Sandy to come up with a proposal, we can discuss it.
Okay. You understand your assignment, Mr. Sandy?
I do.
Okay, very good.
Your honor, and if I may, just as a comment and Councilman Levysey, correct me if I'm not mistaken in this, I know we have certain sidewalks that are probably more critical need than others, but I think we felt that this ought to be something that we look at citywide as best possible, kind of like we do the street overlay. So as some direction to staff would be to, you know, let's not all concentrate it in one area where all the worst, and we try to get the worst things out, but try to spread it out a little bit more evenly, if, if that's some guidance.
It helps.
You know, we're really kind of getting the cart before the horse because this amendment hasn't passed yet.
True. If you ask him, he's got it.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Councilman Carter?
I'd like to ask a question about the debt, because we've heard a lot tonight about debt. And I know the state has a debt ceiling for our city, correct, in every city. What percentage of, what percentage is our debt of our debt ceiling? Does that make sense?
It would take me a second to do the calculation, but in the audit, on the audit last year, we have, our total legal debt margin is 143 million and we have 101 million available to that. But the legal debt margin for assessed valuation is focusing on the debt that's issued and supported by property taxes, because it's based on the property tax levy. So we, there's a significant availability of, when you look at the legal debt margin for property tax.
So you would say we're well under that debt ceiling?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? The amendment on sidewalks. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Did I hear two noes, two ayes against it?
Four yeses, two noes.
Four yeses, two noes. Okay, motion carries. All right, that brings us to a presentation of the downtown-
No, no, you got it, sorry, we're still on first reading.
Oh, we're still on first reading? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, as amended.
Well, I'm trying to get out of here. Okay, yeah.
It's been amended five times, yeah.
No wonder it felt like we'd already done the thing.
Yeah.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second and it's been amended several times.
Five times.
Five times. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign?
Aye.
Five, one, motion carries. Second reading.
Second reading, a bill number 4271, an ordinance appropriating from the revenue of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri expenditures in accordance with the 2013-14 annual budget of the city of Blue Springs as amended.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Corbell?
Aye.
Councilman Levysey?
Aye.
Carried unanimously giving ordinance number 4451.
Okay, now we have a presentation of the downtown historic district survey final report. Who's, oh, you're going to give that one? Mike?
Yes, your honor.
Okay.
Before this evening, we have the historic resources survey. The final draft has been delivered from our consultant. And to present this to you, it's just a presentation of what the survey was, what it entailed and what the next steps may be. It's Chris Burkenmeyer, the chairman of our Historic Preservation Commission.
Hello, thank you for your time tonight. As Michael said, I'm here to kind of present some of the findings from the survey we've got. And in order to do this, I kind of want to set up why we're here and how we got to this survey. We requested a grant to put this survey on, a federal grant, and the requirements of that grant, we requested it in 2012 and it was provided for us or approved to us, was to identify all the historic and architecturally significant sites, basically in downtown Blue Springs and the surrounding neighborhood around it. And what we're trying to do is verify the integrity of our previous survey, that was done 25 years ago. And now with this new survey, we can look at new properties. 25 years, a lot of buildings that might not have qualified previously do qualify now. And some of the findings that we've got, and I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read the report or not, some of it's going to be in the presentation. This is basically the map, the areas that we decided to have our, the person preparing the survey, which was Rossum Preservation, look at all these areas.
Do you have one that shows the existing ones?
Keep going. If you can see the, the dark outline right now is the area that is currently in our historic district. And what we're trying to do is basically add to this district. And if we can go back. The areas that used, that it, yeah, the map right there is the area that we've now come under survey. And basically what they're looking for is architectural, architectural significance of buildings, things that they deem as something that was period of the development of Blue Springs and where we've come from and where we are now. And if you haven't had a chance to read the survey, there's got a lot of information about Blue Springs, you know, the roots and where everything's come from and kind of where we're going and trying to preserve our past as opposed to lose it. The methodology, which is some of the things we talked about. What they've done is they've done a field survey and they photographed all the individual In conjunction with the historic society, we've hoped to get a lot of the records and a lot of the information that they were looking for to try to alleviate some of that pressure that's put on them, some of the cost of the survey. The recommendations are kind of threefold. There's a good fare and a rating that they put on these properties. And they also look at the existing historic district to make sure that a lot of the properties that are in there haven't changed or been modified enough to take us out of the requirements for the historic registry. Some of the properties are, they kind of, there's a lot more than this, but they kind of list them like this. 205 Northwest 16th Street, which is a school, and it has a criteria A for education and criteria C for the area and the architecture for the local educational system. And a lot of that, we're, we're working on that building right now actually to try to develop it into other things, but a lot of these properties have really come to light, if you will, since we've kind of put a spotlight on them and focused in on what they're about and what they mean to our city. Chicago Alton Hotel, I think we're all kind of familiar with that, but that's a property that has the opportunity to be on the national registry, which is kind of something above and beyond just a historic district for a city. Conservation districts, and that's basically what this, those three items we're showing is that right there. So there's a conservation district one, two, and three. And one is basically our downtown buildings that we're at right now. Conservation three is kind of to the east of that and south. And District two is adjacent to the current historic district. What I'm here tonight to, just here tonight for is just to let you guys know what we're doing, let you accept, I guess, this first proposal for the report. We've got to review all this and look at it and then we'll, we'll present it back to you guys for final approval with our recommendation.
Do we need, need a motion to accept that? Okay, all right. All right, thank you for coming and making the presentation and questions. Seeing none, we'll look forward for the next report.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Next we have an introduction reading of bill 4272.
I introduce it, your honor.
All right. First reading of bill number 4272, an ordinance granting to La Cleed Gas Company operating a gas distribution center in the city of Blue Springs, Missouri. Its successors are assigned a franchise to operate a natural gas distribution plant and system in said city and relating thereto.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
For those that might not know, La Cleed, then did La Cleed buy out somebody?
They're buying out MGE.
MGE, they're buying out MGE and they're based out of St. Louis, I believe. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4272, an ordinance granting to La Cleed Gas Company operating a gas distribution center in the city of Blue Springs, Missouri. Its successors are assigned a franchise to operate a natural gas distribution plant and system in said city and relating thereto.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Corbell?
Aye.
Councilman Levysey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously giving it ordinance number 4451.
Next we have introduction reading of bill 4273.
I introduce it, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4273, an ordinance establishing, confirming and continuing the city's video service provider fee.